Good evening, folks, and welcome to the regular Select Board meeting. Today, September twenty seventh. If you'll join me, we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ah, let's see, I gotta take a look here. Yes. We have a full contingent tonight, four Select Board members here, and Joe DiNardo joins us on the Zoom call. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, all.
Hey, Joe.
Hi, Joey.
The orders have been signed. They're on your desk, Joe, for signature. Uh, the first order of business will be the approval of the minutes. That would be the minutes of September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Move, we approve as printed.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the September thirteenth minutes as printed. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous.
Yeah.
Okay.
What was that, Bill?
The next one's supposed to be the meeting of the minutes of the twentieth, not twenty-seven.
No.
Oh.
Today's meeting is.
The minutes are right, the agenda is wrong.
Oh, okay, well. I was gonna say twentieth. So the minutes have been approved, I will circulate them for signature. And the next order of business will be the approval of the special meeting of September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, that was last Tuesday.
Would you accept?
Motion's made to accept those minutes.
Second.
Seconded. Uh, are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the minutes are unanimously approved, I'll circulate those for signature. This section of the meeting is reserved for any announcements that any board members may have, whether in uh, regular voice, or maybe in singing voice.
Yeah. I make a motion that we sing Happy Birthday to Kurt Hathaway, who is twenty-six.
Well, that's a non-debatable motion, obviously, and requires no second either, so we will now do that.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to your Kurt. Happy birthday to you.
I've never seen your face red.
Thank you.
Yeah, he wanted to match his shirt with his face, that'd be fine.
God, he stands up, his legs are longer than I am tall. Don't say anything.
Not only that, but at the ripe old age of twenty-six, he doesn't have to hide that age from anybody, you know, so.
Oh, heck.
There is. Happy birthday, Kurt.
Thank you.
So much for the rest of the room singing.
We have. And we have consumed birthday cake here. So, there you go. Um, the next order of business will be to ask if anyone who is not on the agenda would like to address the board this evening, either on the Zoom call or here at the meeting. Seeing none, hearing none from the Zoom call. Then we will proceed. And, um, I've been asked to, uh, change the order, and this will be with the board's permission, uh, and allow Dave Sears to present his Town Road Commissioner report, uh, first, and the reason for that is that Sharon, sitting to my left, be your right, uh, is, uh, consented to be here, even though she's got a pretty severe cold, and she promises not to sneeze on me here this evening, but I just, I don't want her to have to stay any longer than she has to, so if she has to leave, we will excuse her. So, Dave, if you would, uh, proceed, it's our Road Commissioner. And welcome.
Thank you. And while you're in the welcoming mood, I would like to present our new employee, Ben Crockett, to the board. He started last Monday. You can stand up and be embarrassed.
On up and join Dave. We'll see if we can get your face as red as Kurt.
It's already turning. Don't let these boys bother you.
It'll match your beard, that's all. Welcome, Ben.
Um, any questions with, for Ben, about Ben? You wanna know?
It would be really unfair to ask him questions tonight.
Not really, it's fun.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, Ben.
Uh, I was born and raised in Vermont, I'm from West Rutland originally, live in Rutland now. Um, came from, United Ag and Turf was my last job, was mechanic.
Good, well.
Oh, good.
Beautiful.
Welcome.
So I, I had a seventeen-question questionnaire on.
Just ignore it. He'll go away.
Do that tonight. Does any other board members? No.
See, I told you it hardly hurt at all. Okay.
Pretty easy-peasy.
Um, as you may already know, Town Line Road opened today about eight o'clock this morning. Uh, there's still a little bit of stuff left to do there, but it's minor. Um, there's kind of a bump heading northbound coming on to the asphalt. So, I'm gonna meet with Tom Fuller up there, we're gonna just shim that out a little bit, and then just let it sit for the winter and uh, pave in the spring, uh, from Killington to, uh, Gleason is the plan, so. Um, it looks really good up there. Um, I believe there's some more plantings that need to be done, but it was just not seasonably proper to do the trees that they wanted at this time of year. So I think there's, uh, some more plantings that have to happen in the spring. But, uh, I sent an email out to the board this morning, and anybody that's been by there, it's beautiful. They did, Fabian did a beautiful job up there, came out really nice.
Good.
So.
And the people are happy, that's, that's another.
That's a word, yeah, I mean, they were, I was taking the barricades down, they were driving around me. Is it open, is it open? I'm like, well, sort of, and they're like.
I guess it is now.
Game, game was on, so.
No, I mean, the people that live right there is what I was talking about.
And they were driving around me when I was.
Just the people there?
So, um, that's a, a major hurdle out of the way for the year, which was at times a heavy lift, but we got there.
Glad to be.
Uh, last Friday, we got Quarterline Road graded, which was, has been a nemesis of mine for about a month and a half now. Um, most of the people in Clarendon that drive that road despise it. And, uh, it's, you know, trying to get somebody mid-season to just appear and grade a road is not an easy thing, so. It took me some time, but I finally got it done. And, uh, they did it Friday, and it came out really nice, and they did, uh, Tom Fuller did it, and, uh, they did, uh, our section of Boardman Hill also. So Boardman Hill and Quarterline, our sections are all graded for the winter, and hopefully that's the last time we have to treat them for the winter, but I doubt that.
Yeah. Well, I wanna give, uh, I wanna give a really, really loud shout-out to, uh, Tom Fuller as, as a contractor. I mean, uh, you know, we know he's done our roads before on the paving schedule, and it's a big thing, and obviously, we expect people to perform, but Tom has always been, uh, over and above the call of duty. He, he was on, on the Town Line Road, was he not? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, they paved that last night. They, they left the city and hauled the paver up there and paved it, they got done at like six-thirty or something last night. And just so it would be ready to go, because we were talking about mid-morning today, by the time they got it paved this morning and got cool enough that we could put traffic on it, and I got there quarter seven this morning, and it was done.
Yeah, he's been very, very responsive to the town's needs, and we thank him very much, uh, quality contractor. Go ahead, Dave.
Uh, so just stuff that's taken up our time for the last couple of weeks. Um, I took care of a behemoth of a tree cluster thing for Bill in the cemetery next door that was a tree that turned into about thirty trees. Um, but that thing is gone, that was several hours there, actually. Um, we did, we had some, uh, grants and aid stuff that we've been working on, and I've gotta do, finish the paperwork on it, but we finished those last week. Uh, we did a cou- couple culvert outfalls on Gloria, or not Gloria, on, um, Roy Avenue and, uh, Post Road. And we did the Grove Street outfall, uh, down by the bridge, uh, by the country club. Um, we had to actually find the two drop inlets on Grove Street, because they were out in the woods, well, not in the woods, but they were, they were in the ditches, but that, that you couldn't see them, they were under about a foot of debris. And then the culvert itself was, uh, it was a thirty-inch culvert that was half-full. So, uh, we were there for a couple of days. Uh, it was, it was before Bennett started, so it was just Jason and myself. Um, and, you know, we basically crawled up the culvert with shovels and tried to shovel out as much as we could, but it was, uh, it was a mess, but we got it, it looks really good now, so, uh, kinda knocked those out of the way. Uh, the plow names is on my list, I think the only one I don't have anything from is Joe and Don. Unless you don't care to go.
I left, I left mine on Joe's desk, I think.
Okay.
Uh, one of the ones, Mary, when you put that thing out, you had one on there, I think that was mine.
It was, um,
but I had four circled.
Well. Now, here it is. That looks like, is that your writing?
Yeah.
Okay. You know what, same ones.
Uh-oh.
Really? Yeah.
Okay, off the list. And I spent basically a day last week dealing with a Town Line Road property dispute, those are so fun, I just wanted to bring it up.
Is that our continuing one?
Uh, no, a different one.
Okay.
Oh, yay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just can't wait to get to work to have another one, huh?
Can't wait. Um, BJ came up and saw me, uh, last week, and he gave us a check for the furnace. So we have that, I just need to know what to do with said check.
Um, Don, Don, I have a suggestion.
Well, sure.
And, and I don't know, and I brought this up earlier, um, and I don't know if we have to check with the auditors, or Kerry, or how we spend money like this, but since, um, there is no, um, line in the highway budget for fuel for that building, and I don't know where, um, the fuel was paid for in the past when we found it necessary to buy fuel oil for that building, would it be appropriate to use that, um, funds from the waste oil burner and stuff we sold to purchase fuel for the building? Put it toward that.
I don't know the answer to that question.
That, that would be, that would be my recommendation as a highway committee person, um, and Dave, uh, agrees with me. I, I figured we would probably have to talk to our auditors, Andrew, or someone, or Kerry, and find out how that works. Um, or if that money would go into income for highway and then could be spent out, you know, I, I just wanna make sure it's done appropriately, but that would buy, at the high end of Johnson's price, that would buy us five hundred gallons, um, you know, or, uh, at a minimum, and we may get more, but it would be a good start to, um, our fuel for the building for the winter.
Well, that's a recommendation from the Highway Committee Chairman, and, uh, Bill, did you have some input on this?
Yeah, to answer one of Joe's questions, when we bought fuel oil, it came from Highway Garage Utilities.
Okay.
Okay.
It's the most logical place to bring, to take it from, so that's where it came from when we bought it before.
Well, and that check seems to refer back to Highway Garage Utilities, so I think it would go back into that account. Does anybody else, does anybody have, with the approval of our auditor?
Yeah, I have a little hesitation because it's a capital um, expenditure capital to, to put it in, and it's a capital gain, so I would put it into equipment. Or, but I, it's not a strong feeling, so, you know, do what you wish.
Mary, would it be, Mary, would it, would it be more appropriate if, since we paid for the, um, for new furnace out of the capital improvement, then would you think that it would be more appropriate that the two thousand goes back into the capital improvement fund? Um,
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I, I just have, you know, that, these are some, some things that have come up, and I think that, um, our auditors would probably give us the best guidance on this, since you know, we.
That's where we should go.
Yeah.
Well, I think we'd probably
Yep.
The motion would be to put it in, back into capital improvement with the, with the approval of our auditor.
So moved.
And that was, that was moved and seconded, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, it's unanimous, and we'll, uh, I've gotta call into Andrew in any case on another matter, so we'll put this in front of him as well. I, I think we'll be fine, though. So there you go.
You know, and.
You could give that to Kerry, and she'll handle it.
Okay. Good. Okay, uh, the last issue that I really have, not issue, last thing I have, is, uh, our winter contract, our winter plowed contract. Um, I believe Bill put a copy in everybody's packet. Um, this is the last rendition that I came up with. Uh, as you can see, uh, BJ is here, and Tim Hubbard, uh, is here to represent Hubbard Brothers. Um, if the board would indulge me a little bit, um, this probably should be a committee meeting, but uh, you know, Friday's October first, these guys are on call, October fifteenth, I'd really like to put this thing to ink and get this thing over with by the end of the week, if possible. So, I know BJ has a couple issues. Um, so.
And can I ask just for a quick recap of how this differs from what we've had?
This is, uh, this is basically the same thing that you saw last time, except it's not a draft anymore.
Okay.
Just, all the numbers are the same, everything's the same.
But then compared to last year, it's an increase.
This is an increase of, depends on how you break it all down, I, for simple math, for me, I just broke it down by two hundred and forty, uh, dollars per mile, which is what these guys received last year, that's not actually part of this contract, it's a separate uh, pay item, but, uh, we're offering the contractors two hundred and sixty dollars per mile this year. Um, so basically a twenty-dollar a mile increase.
Okay, thank you.
Which is, uh, turns out to be.
In the contract, it does state in the contract, uh, fuel stipend, right?
Not in the contract, no.
No, that we're doing that, uh, separately?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about that, we didn't wanna get, be tied into that forever and ever, if we, you know, have to redo the contract every year if we decided, you know, fuel prices come down, and we don't have to do the fuel stipend again, we just did that as kind of a separate pay item.
Okay, thank you.
The, uh, but the amount, the amount of increase that you put in there.
That, that is in there.
That was the, the.
The amount of increase is in here, yes.
Yeah, the pay increase that you put in here was at the town, meaning you, and the Highway Committee's sole recommendation, in other words, you did that on your own.
Yes.
And that amounts to just slightly less than a ten percent increase.
Right.
And we gave five point nine percent increases to all our personnel in town.
That's pretty good.
So, I think just shy a ten percent increase is a pretty fair. Well, I commend you for doing that.
Thank you.
And also the fuel increase, that was on your own volition. Nobody had to tell us to do that, that was the fair.
Yeah, Joe and I kinda figured with fuel, you know, when we first started talking about this, fuel was well over five dollars a gallon, it's not a lot cheaper than that, but it's coming down.
Right.
But at the time, it was like, you know, going from whatever it was last year in October, November, you know, to basically a, you know, seventy-five to a hundred percent increase. You know, shouldn't, these guys shouldn't have to absorb that, so that's, that's how we came up with the fuel stipend.
Good, good, wow.
And one point, one point that I wanna make too, Don, is, um, when we formulated our highway budget last year as a board, um, we took the preliminary budget in rough draft that was given to us, and then worked with Wal and, uh, myself to come up with what we have, um, never anticipating that, uh, fuel prices would do what they did, and we did not, um, have any indication that, or, uh, any suggestion on raising the contractors', um, pay, um, something that maybe we have neglected over the years, but it was never, ever brought to our attention that, that it needed to be changed. So, you know, we're, we're kinda doing this, um, because of Dave's, uh, um, plowing plans for the winter has made some money available that will allow us to do it, but this is, what we're doing was not budgeted. So, so we're working within the budgeted amount and trying to, and we're gonna stay within that budgeted amount, we can't exceed it, as, you know, as best we can, so, you know, I think it was a real good, uh, plan on Dave's part to come up with this and, and be able to, uh, uh, offer the contractors an increase this year without it actually being asked for, um, last year, because, because these requests have to be like in November for the next winter, so, um, I commend him on coming up with this plan and, and trying to take, uh, you know, the high side of this and, and doing it on his own to come up with this plan.
Good job.
Thank you.
Actually, we expect no less for our town employees, uh, you know, they've been loyal to us, and we owe them the same kind of loyalty and fairness. So.
And actually, before I turn this over to these guys, Kurt can be embarrassed, I guess, so can Tim, because if he signs a contract this year, this will be his fortieth year as a contractor for the town of Rutland.
Really?
You don't get people that stick with you that long, unless they're, unless they have a loyalty, and, and that loyalty goes far beyond just a job. Uh, you know, let's face it, you know, they're the Hubbards and the Hathaways have always been committed to this town, and we appreciate it. So.
So.
So where are we, Dave?
So, I guess I'm just, I'll turn it over to BJ and Tim and, uh, see where they come up, I know. Well, I'll just let them do their thing. Go ahead.
Okay.
So the I've got a sheet here that I put together, and it's, it's based on the the increases that have been given to
Okay.
town employees since we started system back in two thousand fifteen. And there's an analysis there of what the, what the per-mile pay rate would be had we received the same increases that, that were given to town employees over the year, and I rounded the percentages off a little bit to make the math easy, but you know, it, it equates out to a fair bit more than, than what's being offered. Um, there's also been a couple changes in the contract in regards to, to insurance requirements, um, that add significant cost to providing service to the town. At least for me, uh, and that, that was never, um, required, in fact, I have the copy of the minutes back in two thousand fifteen when I was hired, that, uh, uh, you required a million dollars worth of coverage, and now you're requiring two and, two million with a four million dollar aggregate. I can't, so far, haven't even been able to find an insurance company that can get me a four million dollar aggregate.
You should talk to Tim, because he's got it, and I'm sure he'd share his information with you if necessary. And I just, I mean, I just have one question, BJ, really. I, and I can see uh, what you've done, and it's, it is valid. But my question to you is, who was in charge of requesting and/or providing any increases in all of those years where we, as a board, increased town employees by those three percents? Who was in charge of doing that?
Back in two thousand fifteen, when you voted against hiring me, Don, uh, you referred to us as town employees.
Right, but who, who recommended?
Aren't we, if we were town employees, wouldn't we be subject to?
No, no, because you're contract employees, and it's, the contract employees are by definition different than town employees, you're not, you're not subject to the.
You can be a contractor and an employee.
You can't, they're not employees, they're contractors.
Yeah, you're contractors, and the, the thing is, if, if requests had been made for increases uh, for the per-mileage increase for you, then they would have been dealt with by the board, but I don't ever remember sitting on the board, I can only speak for myself, I don't ever remember a request being put in by the Road Commissioner for increases for his personnel, uh, and, on the contracts. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak to that, if you remember Sharon, or you remember Mary, uh, but the, you have to, you have to request it and, and put it in a proposed budget so that it can be approved by the board, and I'm sure it would have been if it had been requested, but it wasn't. So.
Can I ask BJ a question about this chart? Okay, the, you've got the year, then you've got a column for base, and is that, does that in fact show some increase?
So, so each, so each year listed, there, there's the base rate.
Yeah.
Obviously, the year, first year of the contract, there would be no increase.
Right.
So you get to the annual yearly rate out on the, the furthest right-hand.
Yeah, I'm ignoring that, I'm just asking about the base rate, that does reflect some increase in the base rate.
No.
No? Okay.
No, the, the, the only increase in the base rate is what was calculated based on, you know, based on the previous year, based on my.
I see what you did, I see what you did, okay, you took the previous years, transferred it over to the column, and then added three percent, and brought it back, gotcha, okay.
The same way any other rate increase would be, would be applied, you know, we're going back seven years here, we're not, you know, going back one.
Nope, just needed to understand your chart, thank you.
So as far, as far as the insurance part, um, I, I brought this to the board several meetings ago. Um, I don't know that it was agreed to as a policy, but it was agreed that we would do the, the two million and four million aggregate. Um, I spoke to a woman named Kelly at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and she said that pretty much any insurance company can do an umbrella or rider policy to get to that four million, or whatever that is, but if the board wants to back out on that, I don't have a dog in the fight, it's, it's totally up to you guys. If that's, if you wanna stick with the two million to keep everybody covered, then so be it.
Three million dollar aggregate, but I haven't found anybody that can write me a policy to get to a four million.
You didn't have any trouble, Tim?
Uh, I mean, I'm a larger company, I have to have it bro, you know.
Okay, yeah.
Carry that.
But you were able to get it, but is there a reason why we have to go as high?
I'm not sure why I can't get it, it's just the, the insurance companies I've spoken to can't.
No, I understand.
In fact, I just got an email back from one at four thirty today, they can't get it. And, and I'm not sure, I don't understand insurance and insurance markets, so I don't know why, but I just.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, no, I understand, BJ.
I think a lot of policies are, are two million, three million, I know, it's.
And it depends, obviously, it's.
And it depends, obviously, it's much depend on the size of. Of your company, yeah.
Joe, as highway chairman, uh, would you be all right with going with three?
What I, I was, I guess, Don, I was okay when it was what it was. Um, the increase was recommended to us by, believe the League of Cities and Towns. They said that we should ask for this. Now, the board, we routinely follow their lead, but in this case. Maybe we don't need to. Maybe we can just either leave it where it was or um. Do it in a manner that makes it easier for the contractors to get insurance. I, I would, you know, Dave and I just sat down and. And, and took the information that was provided to us and, and Bill and, and between the three of us, that's how we came up with the contract. Um, we didn't initiate the increase. It was recommended. Um, and, and it'll be the decision of the board as a group, one way or the other. Um, you know, I'm not. Out there to try to make it difficult for people to work for the town. That, that's, you know, and I, and I think the league is maybe looking. You know, they're, they're thinking on the high, you know, maybe that makes it easier for them in some manner to not have to expend money if there were a. Serious incident. I don't know what their motivation is. So, um, would, I'll go, you know, I don't have any, like Dave said, we, we're. We're not really um, pushing this. It, it, it's just what was recommended. That's how we got here.
So, okay, do you know if you can get three million aggregate?
Yes.
Yeah, so why don't?
Yes, I, I can get that.
I would like to make a motion that we go with the three. As long as you can get that, that's, that's, I think, go, given each way, so. I'll second that. So that's two million um, with per occurrence and a three million aggregate. Yeah.
Okay, so that we, so that we really do this um, appropriately um. Uh, policy wise and, and procedure wise, I'd like the motion to be to amend the previous motion to three because we had a. We did take a vote on four, so.
So I, I, so I will redo it. To reamend, to amend the previous motion and make it three.
Motion's been made to amend the previous motion. For four million of aggregate to three million of aggregate. So we're second to the motion.
I seconded it.
And the motion's seconded, uh, further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And it's unanimous and you'll go with three million aggregate.
Correct.
Uh, the fact that Tim has four is to his benefit. So.
That always in the pocket is to your benefit.
Should never need it, hopefully.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
And uh. We do understand. Your math and it is appropriate, BJ, uh, but. We are constrained by. Budget and. This November will start into another budget year. There isn't any reason that we can't deal with. Trying to correct that. For the following year, but. We can't go back on a budget. Unfortunately.
And can we reduce the number of calls for service that we're expected to perform by five? Drop it to thirty-eight?
Uh, okay, we're in negotiation. How about dropping it three to forty?
I would just as soon keep the, the rest of the contract where it is. I think this, you know. Negotiating by committee isn't a really good idea. We have conceded on the three million. Um, and then hopefully we'll hear from you as we get into the budget season in a little bit. About next year's highway budget and that would be helpful.
The real question is, are roads going to get plowed this winter?
Pardon me?
Are the, are roads going to get plowed this winter? Are you guys willing to accept the two hundred and sixty per mile rate or? You know, would, are you guys signing that contract or, or?
I think Tim already signed it.
He hasn't signed yet.
I haven't signed nothing.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, would we like money? Yeah, we all would like more money for the service that we provide. Um. I, I have requested an increase a couple of years back and it was supposedly in the workings, but I never heard anything about it, but I'm not going anywhere. Further with that. Um. Not every winner that we go over our callouts.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be one way if it worked all the way around. I, I mean, I'm willing to, you know, even forty callouts, thirty-eight's better. But a lot of times, a lot of years, we don't get to that. You know, there's certain winners when we work more than that. Last year, we went over it quite a bit, I believe. Um. It's just harder. I mean, it's hard for me. I already put like ten grand in my trucks this year, but I have another business that supports it where I, I don't know what. BJ has for, you know, keeping a truck, one truck going, but it's not cheap. Fliers, brakes. I mean, I know we're a subcontractor and that's our responsibility, but. I can see where he's coming from too.
I can see where next year that we could up it. I don't see it this year because it wasn't budgeted, Tim. And, and to be frank with you, it was not brought to us previously. That you had, I mean, were any of you? Were you aware that Tim had asked for an increase?
Uh, Sharon, I, I have been on, I've been on the highway committee for. My entire board life here. I have done the last six budgets. And at no time was it requested that we increase. I believe it's a hundred and twenty thousand is budgeted for the contractors. There's a five thousand in there for. I don't know if it's like a miscellaneous fund or something else. It's a, it's around a hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-five thousand and it was never. Asked or proposed that we increase it in the last six budgets. And so this is how we've arrived at this dilemma that. Probably everybody on the board inclu, and BJ and Tim um, know that that should have been increased, but. It was not initiated um, in the past and so where we are, where we are. And now that it's brought to our attention. Um, and this is a formal request kind of through, from our contractors, through basically the direct supervisor, which is Dave. He's the guy they're working under. So now we have it on our table and we need to address it. So we will. Um, if this had come before us in the past, it, it should have been. And, and you can't expect people to plow. Or work at the same rate continuously. I mean, it, it did need to be increased and, and it's one of those things that. Sometimes just gets overlooked. You know, we, the, the people that are employed by the town, the highway crew. The police, uh, everybody else, you know, we do the increases and, and you know. Just nobody looked at these contractors as this, in the same light. Probably we should have. If we make a mistake, yes. Um, without being asked, we have made a way to make it possible, knowing. That these guys need some more money. So I think that what we have done. Will work in the budget and it's a good faith endeavor on Dave's part to increase their income this year. Without having the money budgeted. And, and, and I think that that's, that's of what we can do this year. Now that we know about it, we'll be putting together the uh, new twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Will be worked on here in the next few months and, and we'll address um, the changes that need to be addressed in the highway. Operation and, and it's, it's a, it's just what, what it is. It's, it's. It's a tough maybe pill to swallow sometimes if you're the guy on the receiving end and. On the other end, the contract that we do or the way the town pays its contractors. Um, they are guaranteed a certain amount of income for a certain amount of performance. But they're also guaranteed to be paid at the same rate. Or thereabouts, it, I, I believe it's about the same rate for any increase. So even though. Um, less contracted or less callouts would be better, there is no real downside to our guys. Because if they go out forty-nine times, they're not asked to plow at a lesser rate. And they're not asked to um, you know. Actually like donate time to the town. So I, I think that the, the setup is pretty good. It's just the, you know, it, it. It's lacking that it didn't follow like the curve of inflation and it should have so. But, but we know what's going on and, and we. Should be able to correct it in, in the, you know, coming year and, and make it better. It, it's just that we needed to hear this last year and we could have. You know, put it into it, but we never did. So um, I think it's, it's what we can do for this year and, and now that we know what's going on, we'll make it better. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, so uh. So you'd like a Friday deadline on the?
I would, I would like to, you know, Friday or early next week or something, just to get this thing kind of done.
Okay, well, that would be it.
I guess maybe Kurt's question probably needs to be answered. Is, you guys on board or where, where do we stand?
Man, I'm, I'm on board, but um, I still think the college, if he's lowered them a little bit, it's not gonna. Unless it's a snowy year, it's not going to cost the town any more money. And if it's less than. The forty callouts, it's still not going to cost the town any more money because you got it already budgeted. If you go over, it's going to cost the town more money. But if you went over, even if we're getting a higher rate, it's still gonna. Cost the town more money. So it's kind of.
But, but Tim, Tim. Tim, can I say something, Tim? Okay. Um, let me, let me try to make this, I, I try to, if we lower. The number of callouts, okay? What you are guaranteed to get also drops. You, you, you understand that? So, and I, and I don't have a chart in front of me what, what it is, but it, at forty-three callouts. You are guaranteed a certain dollar figure. If you go out.
Drop the dollar figure, I just want to drop the callout.
You want to drop the, you want to drop it, well, well, but, but if we drop the callouts and you get the same amount of money. That, that's going to take some real calculating to see if we can make it work. And it's. Just, I, I know where you're coming from, but it's, eh, we needed to hear this last year. You, you can't do this right ten minutes before you gotta go to work because you put the town in a really tough position. That I don't like being put into because we aren't trying not to increase it and we aren't trying to. Not pay you guys of, of adding, but we can't do it without some notice of it. And, and right now to change the whole format, you know, two weeks before we need to go to work. Is, is, is not acceptable to me. We, we needed to hear about this sooner. Um, you know, you. I, I know what you're saying, but I, I just, I just don't think we should do that right now. It's, it's not the way this. Polit, this normal procedure works.
Joe, uh, Mary has a question for you.
Yeah, um. Am I correct in remembering that Byron calculated the actual number of callouts over several years? In the past?
Yes, that, that, that was. Yes, that's how he determined what he did. When he came up with this plan, he took the history from basically, I think, the time he started as road commissioner. Up until he uh, asked the board to approve this, this plan. Um. And, and that's how he arrived at that. That was the, the, the average number of callouts. Last winter, we went over, I, you know, I know BJ and Tim could tell you probably back. Tim could go back forty years and tell me how many times he plowed each winter and BJ knows for his seven years he's been doing it. Um. So some years, they're gonna come out ahead. If, if by some. Fluke of the imagination and they only went out thirty-five times this, this winter, then there's eight times that basically they get paid for. So, so that's kind of the carrot end of it. And then. The other end of it is, is there's no negative side because they don't get penalized. If they plow less and they don't get penalized if they plow more and there's a certain figure they can count on. Regardless of how many times they go out, they're guaranteed that money for forty-three times at the two hundred and sixty dollar rate. And, and that's, that's, you know, and like I said, that wasn't budgeted for it. I, I know it would, everybody would like to get paid a little better. I mean. I would and, and everybody would, but it's, you have to just budget for it and, and, and I. You know, we just didn't do it. It wasn't, it wasn't brought up and it wasn't calculated for it. And I, and I don't want to set a precedence where we start. Doing things midstream that affects, could affect a lot of other stuff in town because. These things tend to snowball when you do one thing and then somebody else and, and so we, we kind of got to stick to our policies. And, and, you know, and it's not to be mean or cheap. It's, it's just, this is how the town operates. We try to be fair and honest and open and give everybody, you know, a, a re, uh. A responsible amount of money and, and, and for a responsible amount of work and, and you know, that, that's where we are and, and. You know. I, I don't think they're going to get hurt too bad this year. I know a lot of stuff has gone up, but, but we. We are where we are. We have a fixed budget. We have to work with it.
So I, I understand why the contractors want to lower their callouts and that's because the town now has a third truck. And we'll be able to cover our roads with our own trucks during the day. To, during small drizzles where normally they'd be getting called out to get closer to that. Cap so they could get into their bonus money. So they want to bring that call out down so they could maybe get the bonus faster. Or it might not be faster, but they might reach bonus because we're out keeping track of our roads with our three trucks. Before we only had two trucks. Last winter, we were short guys. This winter, we have the equipment. We can start handling stuff during drivel, drizzle storms ourselves. So these guys want to get the bonus quicker. So they could have maybe a little bit more incentive, which is fine.
I understand that, but I think we budgeted so just certain amount, just let me finish, let me finish. We, we budgeted a certain, certain amount of money. Unfortunately. We didn't hear from these contractors till after they got the contract and weren't happy with it. I think we all learned a good lesson here that we need your input through him. To know what you need. To continue plow, plowing at a fair rate. And I do understand that, but I think this year we are locked into what we have and what our budget is.
We just added a fuel line to our highway budget that was never there on a whim because. We need a boiler when the old boiler was perfectly fine. So, you know, we've already set precedents. With, we've already set precedents that we've, we can overspend the budget. So, you know, I, I live half a mile from a state road and I have a plow in the front of my truck. So if the roads aren't getting plowed. I'm going to make it to a state road, but the townspeople, they're going to want their roads plowed. That's the number one job of our highway department is plowing roads.
Right, well.
Can I? Just very briefly. Just don't lose sight of the fact that we're already increasing this contract from two hundred and forty per mile to two hundred and sixty. And we're adding the fuel adjustment. So we have heard your concerns and we've anticipated them, but you're asking us to do even more. I think that's for the next budget year and maybe we can calculate the number of callouts that have averaged over the past several years. But I'm satisfied with two sixty per mile and forty-three callouts and um, the fuel adjustment.
What you guys aren't understanding is the inflation in this equipment. With the equipment in my excavation business, I raised my rates thirty-five percent. Because of fuel inflation. This isn't anywhere near that. I mean, this is a very small ask on their parts. And for something that they haven't had bumps in a long time. I, I'm not saying we can give it all to them.
Well, we have to understand. The, the, the big picture also is that we. We've been presented with a challenge to make a transition. In our road commissioner position, uh, from a longtime road commissioner to a brand new road commissioner and. You know, obviously, I think Dave has come up to the plate, uh, you know, without having had. Uh, any Rutland town budgeting experience.
Well, there's nothing against Dave, Dave's, Dave's working with a budget that the select board created. There's nothing against Dave here at all.
No, but I, but the point I'm making is that.
He's just working, man.
The coordination between the contractors and the road commissioner. Should have taken place earlier in this particular discussion, a lot earlier in order to be able to shuffle things around and I, you know.
Don, new, new contracts mean new, new contract negotiations.
Well, I, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the contract as it stands for this year. And that we, that we go with your suggestions and if you, if you have. A concern for the following year. I want you to go to him and I want you guys to come in and to tell us. We don't know the roads like you do. And, and I know the price of stuff has gone up. I know I can't even go in the grocery store to buy nothing and I come out spending a hundred bucks. So I do understand that. But we have a budget for this year. We can't push it in, in my opinion, any further. So that's my motion. We accept it as stands. With the amendment we made earlier about.
With the amendment we made earlier about the three million aggregate.
That's correct. That is correct.
Motion's been made and seconded. You've heard the motion. Uh, any further discussion on a motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 He said aye.
Joe said aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Um, we have three votes, that's a majority, and the motion carries. Um, no, okay? So Friday's the deadline. You have alternative plans? You got, um?
Airplans.
Yes, okay.
I'm pretty sure it's ten minutes to seven. I've taken up more than enough for your time.
Well, you, you know, we're, we're, we're facing an upcoming winter season, and winter maintenance for our townspeople is a very, very important portion of our responsibility, so it's appropriate. And, and it was a good baptism of fire for Ben.
Yeah.
Sure.
Poor guy.
I don't think he swallowed in ten minutes.
Probably won't show up to work tomorrow morning.
I wouldn't blame him.
Welcome again, Ben.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, BJ.
Yes, you're welcome. I just wanted to voice my opinion, that's all.
Appreciate it. Yep.
For a long time.
Tim, are, are you the motorcycle one of the Hubberts?
Yeah, one of them.
Yeah, my son, I think my son bikes with you.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Greg Dodge?
Yeah, oh yeah, all the time. I don't get to go to Sturgis for two weeks, but.
Oh, my God. I have, I, listen, I, I hold my breath till he gets back home. And then he sends his mother pictures that I should never see. Ever. No.
Tim.
Nice to meet you, Tim.
And there, our next report will be from Barbara Noise-Pulling, our Town Planning Commissioner.
I can probably put in, but I will.
No, okay.
No.
The copy of the letter you sent back on that ordinance review request?
Right.
It's in, that's in the packet, but she's not here for the meeting tonight.
Okay, let's, let's just take a quick look at that. Which, which one is it? Uh, C? Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, B, C, if you wanna take a look at that.
C.
Yeah, C.
Well, they, I, I think that's appropriate, what they've done, and other than just receiving it for the record, I don't think we need to do anything, because it was a request to the planning commission.
Right. So we received that letter from the planning commission that was sent to, uh, Claire Dykstra, uh, from Detman Law, fifty-sixth Court, Street, Middlebury, and that settles that matter, at least for the present time. And our next report will be from Mike Rowe, our Town Recreation Director.
I don't think he's on.
Okay.
No, he did call me, um, or he did text me, and he, there is no issues at this point.
Okay, Mike, taking a break. Uh, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. Uh, the last two weeks, we had seven calls. Um, we got our new truck put together, it's all in service now. Uh, so that's ready to go. Uh, last, two weeks ago, we all participated in a, uh, live fire training up at the Fire Academy with, uh, uh, propane gas. So, a lot of the guys and girls got some live fire training up at the academy. Um, other than that, really don't have much to tell ya.
So the new truck is working fine? That new truck was out on those seven calls for service?
No, not the seven. It's been the one so far.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
And following Chris will be our Town Clerk and Treasurer, Carrie Clark. Good evening, Carrie. Come on up. There's two candy bars on the table.
There's a whole cake over here.
I expect you to go home and eat every bit of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I got, I got the one that was the real cream.
Boy.
What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do, Carrie? You, you can't stop this kind of banner.
She makes, yeah, misses Mike Rowe when she tries to keep him calm down in the back row.
Yeah, well, I have to, I have to intervene in their signaling, because I can see it going back and forth.
Bad influence that, Mike Rowe.
What you got, Carrie?
All right, just a couple of things. Uh, last time I said that I'd have some numbers percentage-wise for the first installment of taxes. Um, we received ninety-six percent of the first installment of taxes.
Wow.
It's usually pretty average.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so that was great. Um, let's see, that was a quick announcement. Um, one of the main things that I wanted to put out there tonight, um, so it's in the minute, so I'm also planning on putting it on social media, and all over the place, really, the Circle article will have it in it too, but, um, for people that don't know, November's election, the, the ballots are being sent out by the state. They're not being sent out by us. Um, and so I've been getting many, many, many requests, email, phone calls, you name it. Um, can I have an absentee ballot? You, you're already getting one. Um, so you're, if you're an active voter in Rutland Town, um, you will be mailed the ballots for November to the mailing address that is on file as of September ninth. They pulled the mailing list on September ninth. Um, so, uh, I've had questions about, well, but I'm in college, I'm not at my address, or um, I'm new to the town, and I came from the city, or I came from Castleton, or I'm moving out of the town. There, your ballot is going to go to the address that was on file, um, as of the ninth, as I said. If you had any changes, you must call myself or Susan. Um, if you're at college, uh, we can send you one from here. Um, a- a- any ballot that will have to be sent out of my office that will be sent to voters as, um, a second ballot or a third ballot, um, you will need to sign an affidavit saying that you did not receive that one that was sent out to you from the state. Um, same goes for if you wish to vote in person in November at the polling places, either my, either at the school or here. Um, everyone has already, or will already receive one, so if you decide that you wanna do it in person, either you can bring that with you, the one that was sent to your home, um, and show up in person, but you will have to sign an affidavit saying this was your only one vote, and we did not count more than one vote um, for you. And we are very careful about that in this office, um, and I think we do a phenomenal job at making sure that everything is verified, and there is no question about anything in, in the election world in this office. So, if you hear this, that's great. If you don't, social media will have it, and so will, um, the Circle. And the Circle goes out to all active voters, so. Yes. Do we know when the state is mailing the ballots? So it, uh, the state is starting towns this week, and we will be notified when our town gets sent, but as of today, it has not. So I'm going to say within the next couple of weeks, you should be receiving something. Um, I've had so many different scenarios. I'm going on vacation was the other day. So I came here to vote. When are you going on vacation? Well, that, they were going on vacation for November, but they'll still have the ballot way before then, so.
We hope.
It, it'll happen. It worked well the last time, and I don't, I mean, there's gonna be some, some bumps in the road, but the venue knows that they're getting one. That'll be helpful to us. Um, so that was the biggest thing I had to say. Uh, second thing, or third thing, um, I'm in the middle of interviewing for a third person in my office. I've had a few interviews, and I will continue to have interviews this week, hoping to make a decision by the end of this week or early next week, and I will report to the board, um, my findings the next time we meet. Hopefully, I'll have a name for you. I'm excited about that. And, um, the last thing is, it is budget time, so I will have the budget sheets, um, set up and ready to go, um, so that we can get started on talking about the next year's budget for each department. That's all I had.
Super. Questions from the board? Joe?
I'm off that, thank you.
Bert?
Also, Mary?
No, Bert already asked, thanks.
I'm fine.
Okay, great. Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Carrie.
Next report will be from Ed Dumas, our Town Police Chief. Good evening, Ed.
I don't have much tonight, you know. Hey, the calls for service. Obviously, you got twenty-four thefts, traffic stops, suspicious murder complaints agencies assist. You guys have any questions on them?
No, happy birthday yesterday, by the way.
Yeah, no need to say no.
You can have part of that.
I'm good.
There's a cake over there.
I'm good.
I was gonna do a second cake, cause I found out on Facebook when your daughter posted it.
And since you're way, way over the twenty-six mark, you'll have first dibs.
Who says he's way, way over?
Well, I think he is.
He can have his percentage, trust me.
He's not a bit over thirty.
So, a different subject. Uh, we started doing patrols down in the plaza on Monday, Ted and myself. We noticed almost immediate results, uh, no retail thefts. If we're there, there are no thefts, period. None.
When you leave.
Ted left on Monday. He stayed there from like nine to noon. He left to get us something to eat, had three thefts. We went down, I went down at that point, and we stayed there the rest of the time till, uh, we got done. Then we went back out at six o'clock, and there was no thefts from six to eleven o'clock, nothing. I went down this morning, I got there at ten, I stayed till one-thirty, not a single theft. I went to the, each of the stores, told them I was there, gave my cell phone number, and, uh, nothing. We have no thefts, period. We had no transit hanging around, other than the front begging for money. And we got a lot of, uh, a lot of feedback from the public that liked us being there. So, that they feel safer. Uh, I know that a lot of stuff was walking out of a certain store down there, who doesn't wanna be mentioned, but armloads of the stuff, so. And they had nothing. It's, I.
So you're an annoyance to them, huh?
We, this will work.
Good job, Ed.
Can stop it, I think, make a difference.
So people are coming up, knocking on the windows of the car, or waving to you, and
stopping, talking to us, asking us questions, thanking us. Uh, yeah, all the store managers are glad to see us there, so. I tell them we'll be there a lot, so get used to it. So, it's, it is working, and we'll probably, uh, more was a heavy day for us, so we will, uh, probably have somebody there in just regular time. We'll split up between the three of us to, uh, just be in on top of the, uh, the other time we're going to put in. And then I have one more thing to ask for. We try to keep track of, when we started doing it, when Lynn started doing the, uh, the calls for service in the south in the town, uh, so we try to get the addresses down. She has a hard time, cause the BSP Dispatch puts in addresses that are different. We have a difficult time for her finding them. But they're, and they always, if there's an issue in the parking lot, they say it's Hanaford's problem. But it's not. So the old address was, uh, E-nine-one was, let me get it straight here. Two-ninety-six, two-ninety-six US Route Seven South, and that is the parking lot of the Greenmount Plaza. As E-nine-one does not have that anymore. Uh, Lynn went to Howard, and he said that I'm not gonna do it justice, please, let her go, please help me with the problem I'm having tracking cases that happened in the Plaza Park Lot. E-nine-one has numbers for all the stores, but nothing for the entire parking area. Uh, Howard tried the E-nine-one, S, E-nine-one, they stated that would not be the correct address. Howard advised the select board would have to approve the use of that specific address for the Greenmount Plaza. The only way around it would be to redo the entire plaza. They recommend that we just use the address closest to the incident. And Lynn asked, uh, me to ask you if we could, just for tracking purposes, it would make our life easier in the police department. If, if they just use a close address, okay, one puts, one puts Hanaford's, one puts, uh, uh, Dix, one puts, uh, the, uh, Bed Bath & Beyond, it's in the parking lot. It would just help us break things up better.
So you're, what you're saying is, you want, if it's the closest to Bed Bath & Beyond, do you give their number in parking lot?
That is what, that's what E-nine-one suggested.
And what is Lynn asking for?
Lynn is asking the parking lot is two-ninety-six.
Okay, and, and we have to.
US Route Seven South, and you guys.
All right, and you're asking, and she's asking that we would use that, in order for you to be able to use that, we as a board have to approve that.
Okay, so my question to you, Ed, is very, very simple, really. If, if the portion of the parking lot is, um, linked to the location of the store, then that gives a much more specific location than just one number for the whole parking lot is an impossibility. Then you go down and you say, well, where the hell is this problem? It's a huge parking lot, how are you gonna know where it is?
So, based on past experience, they tell me, oh, it's in the Hanaford's, it's Hanaford's parking lot. Whether it's in front of Michael's, or in front of, uh, the other computer store staples, it's Hanaford's parking lot. So the, the same thing, then you go, okay, what's it closest to? Well, okay, they're over by, they're over by the Verizon store. Okay, now we go over by the Verizon store. We have to ask the second question anyways, they just tell us Hanaford's parking lot.
So you get the call, and all you know is you're going to the Hanaford parking lot.
You know, we're going to the parking lot. We have no exact address until we get more information.
Well, that's why I think the, the state is, I, I, I have to, I don't often disagree with, with.
The thing about it is this, we're we're trying to track stuff for us, for the board. And it was difficult to track things if we don't have the correct address for, where things happen. So in our heads and, and the police world's heads, we're thinking, it's in the parking lot, okay, we know it's the parking lot. This is where the issue is. Is, are we having the thefts in the parking lot, or someone breaking windows, or they have it in Hanaford's, or, so we have a break into a vehicle, is it, now it's mixed. We'll look at it, it may be put in as a break into Hanaford's, so we gotta try to sort that out too. We're just trying to.
Um, when we've done this, I, I have several questions. One is, are the stores individually numbered?
They are.
Okay, and that includes the bank, which is standalone, and the others, which are standalone. So you're looking for this number only for the parking lot?
Parking lot, period.
All right, well, that makes more sense to me than, yeah.
Cause if it's a store step, they're gonna give you the store number.
I think three-twenty-two is Hanaford's.
Okay.
Three-eighteen, I believe, is Bed Bath & Beyond, three-twenty.
I see what they're saying now.
Yeah, but that second question is, obviously, that second question is the most important question, because when you go down there, you wanna go, you wanna know where to go in the parking lot.
But if E-nine-nine-one-one won't do that.
Well, I don't know.
They, they, they do.
They do?
They'll ask the people, it's in this local, it's in this general.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
It's not.
Because it's a long way from the Staples parking lot to the Hannaford's.
It is, well, and even, yeah.
And in the past, we've asked Howard to give us a map and a diagram and show us, can we do that again before we make a final decision here?
Well, we should, but I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem, it's the, the whole parking lot has got the number, right? That's assigned by nine one one, right?
We have a map with that sign number on it.
Okay, so that that two ninety-six doesn't conflict with anything else down there and it is just for the parking lot.
Right, right.
Something, yeah, so that makes sense. And then I think what you're gonna end up having to do anyway, Ed, is you're, you may have to reference. The store, but but at least if you guys get a call down there and it's two ninety-six, you know you're looking in the parking lot for the problem. Now, if it's Hannaford's three twenty-two, you don't know if it's Hannaford's in the store or Hannaford's in front of the store. So this will simplify at least where you're looking.
Right.
I think we should just approve that if that's the, um, designated, uh, address to the parking lot, I think that's fine.
Uh, you know, I really think that if we're gonna err, we need to err on the side of our. Police Department recommendation, you know, and they're the ones.
You wanna wait a week or two weeks on this and I'll get the more information to you, it's not that critical at this point, man.
Well, it's not, I don't think it's necessary to do anything except to prove the two ninety-six, you know, what if it's, that's the number for the parking lot. What what else do you need?
Is that what Howard said the number was?
Yes.
Okay.
You're gonna move for that?
We got a map that says that's the parking lot, says two ninety-six, so.
Just need a motion.
Okay, I moved the the parking lot at. Um, I hate to say Hannaford's, but the Green Mountain Plaza. Green Mountain Plaza is two ninety-six, US Route seven, two ninety-six, south.
Right, second.
E nine one one.
E nine one one, two one one. Whatever.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the, uh, numbering of the Green Mountain Plaza. E nine one one, the parking lot has two ninety-six. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous and you go with it.
The last thing I have is I would like to thank the board. For the last two and a half, almost three years, we, I've complained to you about the issues we're having in the plaza. Pause from, uh, I believe the, uh, homeless shelter we have down near that location. You listened to me, you did things, I won't say a whole lot about it, but I just wanna say thank you very much. Uh, it's greatly appreciated now by my officers, myself, but I think our community will appreciate it also. And, uh, I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you for the job you folks are all doing.
It's been a pretty good joint effort, Ed, I can tell you that. Good, thank you, Ed. Mike, are you, uh, are you online? See you. No, 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 no.
Okay.
JP online?
He forgot to talk up, he's already hearing.
Huh?
Talk up, he's already hearing.
I can see him if he's on here.
He's not on there.
I don't think he's here.
It's also for a second cup, our first possible, he, he was gonna be here, but I told him just go. Go down to the.
Oh, go, go down and patrol?
Go do cop stuff.
Okay.
Beautiful.
Much better place for him.
Better there than here. Anyways, um.
We could go down there and harass him.
Right, and JP's not here, so that. That brings up our very capable town administrator, Bill Sweet.
Do you mind if I leave?
Where's my telephone?
Do you mind if I leave? Feel good.
Do we have anything else that needs a vote?
You're, you're. Possibly, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Better home.
All three.
We have, we have three, I mean, you know, it's, there's, I don't believe there's anything controversial on here.
Sorry, Bill, I'm leaving.
That's okay, I won't take offense, it's all right.
I gave you my page.
Select woman Russell has asked to be excused and you are, and have a nice evening. She needs some meds and some sleep.
All right, so, uh, a few things, a few things to go over. Um, in your.
Cake.
Packets, uh, you have a couple policies, A and B, uh, are there for. Uh, review and and discussion, um.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Trying to locate your pocketbook, it's got like four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I'm probably in the car.
Did it in the car last time, so.
Bye. Good night, Sharon.
Good night, Sharon.
Thanks, Sharon.
Um, the, uh, so a couple things, a couple policies to go over, uh, A, in your packet is. Uh, the, uh, our credit card policy, which I actually wasn't aware of. We had till we inadvertently came across it where somewhere it didn't belong, uh, but nonetheless, we 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 came across it. And realized that we are not exactly in compliance with our own policy. Uh, and after doing a, after having a discussion with Carrie about it and looking up, uh, what. Uh, BLCT's current model policy, let's grab that one, cuz they're, they're a good resource for that. Uh, there's, their guidance is is, and their policy is much more streamlined. Uh, the policy in place for us right now is fairly cumbersome and time consuming for for Carrie. Um, but it's. It, I just, I want to give you guys these, these two copies, so there's the current version. And, uh, the model policy with their, with their guidance on there, uh, as as an example, and to see if you wanted to. Uh, make any updates to it, uh, the other is our social service agency appropriation policy. For organizations that wish to put something on our ballot, uh, again, didn't, didn't know we had it, uh, but is certainly could be very useful. Uh, and, uh, we are rapidly approaching, uh, the time when we're gonna start receiving these requests, so. This is here, I, more as a, if we want to make any changes to it, or just to say, hey, you know, yeah, we're putting this back out there in the world. And we can proactively send it to the agencies that come to us, that way they're all on the same page as each other. Which just makes the town report a little easier to put together.
So I, I think the easier one to deal with is B, the social service agency appropriation policy, basically it says. Um, if you're one of the. Community agencies that gets special appropriations, a separate item on the ballot, then you have to get your request in sixty days before. Um, town meeting, I think most of them have respected that. And if your increase, uh, request is ten percent or more than the previous years, what the voters approved, then you have to do it. By a petition. And that's basically, I don't, I'm assuming that's working okay, I've not heard any complaints, it is, I I'm aware of the policy, Don and I both signed this back in. Back a while ago, um, and we, we wanted some clarity, and it also reminds the agencies that they have to get a report in for the annual report, so.
Yes.
Um, if we, I'm fine with it as it is, if you want to make a note that it's reviewed and. Read that, that's fine.
I just had a suggestion, and I'll, I'll bring this up again, I think I, I brought it up way back. When you, uh, mentioned, Mary, uh, we did this.
What, in twenty fifteen?
Yeah, way back in twenty fifteen, Joe Dikton and you and I signed it, so we were the only three, uh, signatories on this. And at the time. I had a concern because of rising amounts of requests. Uh, I had a, I had a concern that we needed to. Have something in this appropriation policy that addressed a limit. A limit of some kind or a trigger provision of some kind for either a five percent. Uh, petition requirement or. An automatic referral to the board to place the item as a budget item. And the reason that I'm saying this is that. As we know, um, unless there's significant amount of controversy over any particular item that's on those special requests. They generally always go through, I don't, it's very rare that any of them do not pass. Which is fine. But when you get into the hundred thousand dollar category. We put all, and we're, and we're getting ready to do this, Mary, as you know, I mean, we're getting ready to have. Tons of budget sheets in front of us, each committee member has got a tremendous amount of responsibility with those budgets. Uh, and general responsibility to the townspeople to scrutinize those budgets. We put a lot more time into items that are far less than a hundred thousand dollars. In terms of deciding whether they go in the budget, which all have to be approved by the people anyway. So. Again, I say. There should be some kind of a limitation. That puts these items not as special requests, which most are in the. Five hundred, a thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand, I mean, that's not going to kill a, a budget of this town. But when you get up into a hundred thousand, and I know we seem to be talking about the library, but I'm not, I really am not talking about the library. That's an example, obviously, it's the canary in the coal mine. Uh, but any social service request could accelerate or be made that would be. Far in excess of what we would consider small amounts as additional items on that. So, I'm just asking the board if you wish to discuss that and. And deal with it or. Take it in advisement for next year or whatever. But Mary's right, we haven't had a problem with the policy that presently exists.
And the, the risk, I think, to what you're saying is if we do take. Any one of the special appropriations and included in the budget. Is that, A, there could be less scrutiny by the townspeople because it's not a standalone item. Or conversely, if it's a hot topic item, then a whole budget could go down because that's in. The budget, so, you know, two, two things to think about if we wanna. We're, we're not at the point where people are making requests yet, so if you wanna put it off until, you know, we think about it and two meetings from now, we can take it up again.
I don't think it's gonna hurt for us to do that, but, you know, and I agree with you, and that's one of the reasons that the, 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 you know. My first suggestion was that any request greater than a hundred thousand will require a petition. Signed by five percent of the registered town voters, that, that would make the requesting agency have to do. Substantially a little bit more work than just submit a letter to the town.
Well, I, I frankly think that they do more than that, and the reminder is. If they, there is already the restriction, if their request is more than ten percent of the previous years, they do have to go to petition.
Right.
So, um.
But I'm looking at.
I know what you're looking at.
I'm looking at the higher numbers.
I know.
So. Let's. If you don't have any objection, we'll hold it off and and we'll, we'll take it up next meeting. And people can think about whether they'd like to put that in there or not. Okay, fine, let's go to the, uh, credit card policy because I think that one is the easiest.
Oh, well, now I have a couple of things on that.
Okay, let's take it.
Okay, what? The credit card policy, we're moving away from like one or two credit cards that are in your office that people log. You know, log in and out, and I understand that policy hasn't been followed. To issuing separate credit cards to department heads. Um, so it's a, it's a slight change in policy, and I understand the League of Cities and Towns, most of it is fine. Um, the things that I would. Flag are some things that we have had. For example, under. Security. Um, authorized credit card users are responsible and so on, and shall immediately notify the select board chair and the credit card company or bank if the credit card is lost or stolen. Our previous policy said they should also notify our town treasurer, so I would make that addition there. Um, and it isn't just if the credit card is lost or stolen, they should also notify. If they have any information that the card has been misused. Okay, so. I would, I would make that change, is Bill scribbling notes, okay? Um. Oh, under.
Can I, can I put like, or if there is suspected fraud? Would that be? Good or not?
I don't care if you.
But I, I know, I know what you mean.
Yeah, yeah, so it shouldn't be, we can't find the card, it should be, oh, look, I just got the statement and it looks funny, okay, so. Um, under documentation. I think we might want to add for under telephone purchases, documentation will include, it says now a fax copy. I think more likely we're gonna get a scanned copy.
Okay.
So we should add scanned or scanned. Um. And then there was a really good thing that I thought we had in the old policy. Um, two good things, one is. A reminder that the preferred method of payment still should remain the purchase order and and prior approval by the select board. And that credit card should only be used when we can't do a purchase order. Um, so I would recommend that we put that language in, otherwise people are out there. Spending money on behalf of the town without necessarily our approval.
Swipe away.
Just, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Um. And then the, I don't know whether you wanna do this one, the old. Policy had the requirement that the town treasurer will present the monthly credit card statements with details about. Use to the select board each month. And then we, we were expected to ratify, that was our oversight responsibility. I don't know whether you feel that's necessary if we go through the process outlined in the new credit card policy, but. So I'm, I'm less.
Could be a bad thing.
It, it wouldn't be a bad thing.
We had to see it.
Yeah. It's in the orders.
The statements are in the orders, yeah.
Okay.
And in, on the, on the credit card statement. Uh, it currently, it's just Bill and I who hold our credit card to what used to be pupils.
Right.
M and T, and when we both get statements, um, we. Are, we have our receipts that we attach to it and by each item.
Mm-hmm.
We put the line number that we use out of the budget, and then, and then that gets entered into the.
That was, that was a question, do you do it or do you ask the department heads to do it?
For.
Put, uh, putting the budget line in, cuz I knew you used to have them do it.
Currently, it's just Bill and I that do that, but when, when we make charges for other departments with their approval. Because it's a company that only does credit cards or some. Strange like that, um, they have to tell me where it's coming out of.
Okay.
So, we're always communicating with the.
Okay.
Department heads, um, and, and the, the report really is the statement that comes every month.
Um, and then the last thing is just if our auditor has any input, I mean, cuz this is. Would it be appropriate for their tracking purposes, is it okay to move from what we had before to this League of Cities and Towns?
Said that what we're doing is.
Yeah.
Bill, you got, you got all these?
I got the notes, yep.
Yep, you incorporate that, bring it to us for the next meeting, we'll put it on for action next time.
Yep, no problem.
Without any objection or any other suggestions from board?
You have that the statements will be in the orders, right? I mean, I know that's what we're, I know that's what we're.
We're in there, right, credit card state, so.
I know that.
There we are, yeah.
I know that's what we're doing currently, but we should put it in our policy, so, I mean, it'll change. People in the future will always. You know, at least.
Hopefully this time we can get five signatures on this policy.
I, I suspect we might have grabbed, it's possible the other two signed eventually, but I suspect we probably just grabbed. Cuz I don't remember any huge controversy.
Policy that, when I, when I found the policy, our originalist, uh, I just, I literally scanned the page and I think I, the original, the, the, I just cut this. just cut this, picture each other. So that was only, there was only three that were ever on it, so.
Okay, well. They missed out.
They did, yeah. Big happenings.
So social service.
All right, we got that.
Next time.
Uh, let's see, uh, D, uh, in your packet. Uh, from Robert Clark is the summary of the post-road water main closure. Uh, there are a couple items for, that just need Don's signature in there for originals. Uh, and you approved the, uh, the, the final payment approval was, should have been in the orders. Uh, for, to, to finish that out. And, uh, we're, we're in good shape.
I'm sorry, did you say we had already approved it?
Yes, the, this, this, this is the paperwork approving the, the, we're signing up on the contract. Dave, Dave's happy, Robert Clark's happy. The residents are happy. This is just us saying we're good.
Okay, I'm not really sure of the difference, but.
Well, the, the board has to, that would being the, the, the town, the board's on the contract with, um.
That all terms of the contract have been satisfied and those, okay?
Yes, so, so those are the last things.
Satisfied.
And it's actually came in less than the original estimate was, so.
Okay, I move we, um, authorize our chair to sign on behalf of the town indicating that the post-road water main project has, um, been completed for the contract.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded that I sign the final documents on the post-road water extension project. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And that's unanimous. So I'll sign those.
That's a pretty, that was a pretty easy one. Uh, and as a follow-up, uh, uh, on your, in the packet, uh, right behind that is a additional water connection request from, uh, one of the other people. The, this is the three, we now have three of four. Uh, curb stops have connection requests. This is the third one to be approved. Uh, and, uh, I, I've, I followed up with uh, the other two that we've already approved, saying the project is complete. Uh, we are, if you would like to connect, go ahead and hire a contractor and suggested they call Rutland City and let them know as soon as they hire a contractor so they can come out and put their water meter in. Uh, and yeah, we're, we're, we're in good shape. So she's ready to get her connection and move forward.
Okay, we don't need to approve. This is administrative on your part.
I can't, I can't do this. Remember the water and sewer, we, we, we talked about that and that's the statutory one. I, I can't.
Okay, I would move we approve, um, the water connection request for fourteen sixty-one post-road. It looks like Paluski.
Palusiak.
Palusiak, it's hard to read. Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the water connection request by Ms. Palusiak. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. There's nothing, there's nothing, thank you, Joe. There's nothing you need to sign. So.
And it's approved.
Uh.
Do you need this copy?
No, I've, I've got mine. That's, that was just, that was just put in the packet. Uh, the last thing I have is, uh, we got our VLCT policy renewal documents a couple of weeks ago. Um, working my way through those. Uh, I, all the departments got their vehicles and buildings and whatnot. So, um, I'm just, have a couple of things to wrap up and we're gonna be good and send it back to them. They just, they just came around and did their, uh, um, reevaluation of the building. So all the building values are current and happy, so.
Cold storage building at Northwood is in there.
It's in there, yeah. Yep, they got, they got them all.
The rec department got that free little booth thing? Is that covered?
That, I think that's, I, I think it's listed in auxiliary structure, but I'll, I'll, I can, I can double check, but.
And of course, we put the new fire truck on as soon as.
New fire truck is on there. Yeah, we, we got, we got that on there. That was, that was done. Uh, yeah, everything, all the vehicles are current. You know, we, we, we've kept, I've kept up with that. So, uh, yep, no, it's just, so we're, we're, we just got a couple of departments off to just to sign off and say that, yeah, their vehicles are their vehicles and that they are where they say they are and we're good with that. Um, so we'll be sending that back in. It's, it's due back in before the next board meeting, but it's all, there's nothing the board needs to approve. It's just, we're just doing a little paperwork in the background, so.
The new compactor. The, the bin, I mean, it's not new.
Station.
Was that?
It's, it's not covered specifically. It's because, because it's a, it's, they, we'd asked about that and it's considered part of the building.
Okay.
So it's not a thing in, in and of itself. It's part of the, it's considered, it's covered under the building, so.
Okay.
If the building had a catastrophic loss, then it would be covered under that.
The, no, well, the canopy over the transfer station at the end, that's, that was covered under a previous.
Yeah, that's, that's, we, we took care of that. Um.
That's all I can think of.
Yep. So that's, it's, it's like, we, we, it's, everything looks good, like everything, it's, it's all, it's all where it's supposed to be. It's just going through and updating everything. We've got to update the number of employees and some things like that, but really not, not much, not much really changes. But there's like sections for the police and the fire and I send them off and they're very good about getting them right back to me, so. Uh, no, it's, it's pretty good. Uh, we just got a couple of things. We got Kerry just needs to do like a payroll estimate for the next year and we're largely done with it, so, um. Uh, that's it for that. And, uh, we have been, uh, working with Consolidated. They've been doing the installations around town buildings and a couple of little bumps here and there, but we're, we're working our way through them. Uh, but yeah, that's, it's going pretty well. Like, we've, most of the buildings are online and, uh, our next, next phase, after, after they're all done is, is we're working on the, um, like the, the hotspots, the like public wifi there, and that's gonna be a little bit more of a project, but not, not too difficult, just, uh, just the next, the next step, so.
Bill, I think the townspeople, anybody listening and, you know, for the record, uh, for the recording anyway. Uh, to give a uh, well, kind of a thumbnail sketch of why we're, why we're switching over to fiber optic and with Consolidated, I think.
So we have had a lot, we've had, over the last several years, we've had discussions about, um, adding especially better internet service for Northwood Park, for the highway garage, for the pools and things like that, especially because we have uh, some security infrastructure there. Uh, Comcast was unable, unwilling, just didn't work for them to run cable into the park because it had to be buried underground. Uh, so that was not an option. So we, we couldn't get Comcasted at any of the buildings. Uh, and discussing it with Consolidated, they, um, had a service availability at all the buildings in town, so. Uh, we, that was the, that was the agreement we signed with them a little while ago. Uh, so we are getting, um, uh, fiber internet service at every building. Uh, and they are being very accommodating with getting the installations at some of these remote buildings for, we're, we're paying a very small installation cost and, uh, they're doing a, a fair amount of work to get it there. So, uh, this is gonna allow us to, um, have some better visibility for security for, for the whole park. Uh, as well as, uh, be able to roll out, um, uh, public wifi. We're gonna be able, and we'll be able to manage that. So we'll look at a public wifi system at all the buildings that people can, can connect to and, and use. Uh, and, um, we have come up with a, a very good way to, to manage that, so. I don't. Uh, so it's, uh, it's, it's a great, it's a great thing, but and the cost overall, we've added, uh, we have added two buildings that never had internet service before. And we have upgraded every building to, uh, speeds that are in some cases ten times what they had before for, for connection speed, and we are paying no more a month than we were before.
And the contract is for?
Three years.
Three-year contract. So. Uh, I think it's a good deal all around.
Yep.
And I wanted the people to know why we're doing it.
Yep.
Because they have had questions, so.
It's getting there. We, we should have it done. I think, uh, like ninety-nine percent of the installs will be done with a couple cleanup things, but we're done this week, so.
Yep, nice.
Very good. And that's, uh.
That means a telephone will appear on the desk.
Uh, we, they, they were downstairs yesterday. This, this building is the most complicated of them all to change, and that was happening uh, yesterday, and they had a rep on site. We had our IT person here and they needed the, because the cellphone service downstairs is lacking. Uh, they, we needed to move a phone downstairs from the use. That's where, that's where it went, so. It'll, it'll, it'll be back. Didn't, it didn't go far. That's, that's everything I have.
Any questions of Bill?
Uh, I do. And, and this pertains to a discussion we had, um, a while ago regarding, um, our road commissioner living out of town now. Um, have we looked into any, um, weather monitoring, um, that you, uh, devices, programs that will help Dave make his decisions on callouts and has he even, I know he's had so many things going on and we've talked to him twenty times in the last month, and I've never seemed to remember to ask him this. So I know that was something that, you know, we're, we're gonna have snow on the ground here. Whatever, and I, I think we need to look at this.
Uh, Dave and I have not discussed that specifically, but, uh, we certainly, we can certainly make that accommodation. And that's, again, like having this, this new, these new connections and the highway garage is getting it, I think tomorrow or Thursday.
Oh, we hit a bump today.
Did you? Okay, like it's, Northwood Park had some challenges that they weren't expecting, so, but what, Dave had internet service, so he's not really affected. The other buildings are, you know, we're, we're, we're able to manage, so. Uh, but with this, with this service, he's gonna have some access to uh, resources that he hasn't been, that we haven't been able to do before. Uh, so we haven't talked about that, but we certainly can. That's not a very complicated thing to, to take care of.
Yeah, when, when you talk to, what brought it to my mind tonight was this whole, uh, in, improved service in Northwood and, and different things. I know that, um, that will be a big plus for what we need to do, so. Okay, thanks, Bill.
Certainly will be. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions for Bill? Thanks, Bill.
All right, absolutely.
Any committee chairs have committee meeting updates?
A question.
No meeting newly for.
Um, the budget process. When, because I, I got some stuff coming up in my, my other job, so just curious what you had in mind for
Well, refresh my memory, Mary, as to when we usually start it, because we can start whenever, whenever Kerry gets us the budget sheets, I would imagine. I will leave it up to the committee chairs to grab your committee together and start the process as soon as you have the sheets, and then uh, I guess we'll look for some kind of updates or at some point, we'll just put it on the list or put it on the agenda.
Mary, Mary, don't we usually look to try to have these, I think in like the last six years, we kept getting earlier, but we're, we're usually shooting to have preliminary budgets before Thanksgiving and finished budgets by mid-December, I think, or something like that, so we're not jammed up on the other end when Kerry needs to get stuff into the, um, either the Kerry and Bill into the town report and make sure we have it. So I think that's why we always started early.
That sounds right, Joe.
Yeah, I think we're shooting for like December, mid-December to have finalized budgets and have our budget meetings so that, um, you know, we're not having to come off of, uh, you know, over the holidays, uh, Christmas and New Year's and then have to work day and night to finish them up, so. I think that would be probably our schedule, though.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking we'd have those, obviously Kerry said she would have those out pretty quick, so we could, I, I know we can expect them uh, this week or early next week. Uh, and.
And I think I would like, yeah, I'd like, you know, because this is Dave's first year, um, and, and I need to, I think him and I need to sit down and work over some stuff, so we might, you know, the sooner we get started on this, so that he's gonna have a lot going on in the next few months, so the longer we can stretch this out and we can get this in, so he's not rushed. I, I don't want him to be rushed.
Right.
I've already been working on it.
I agree. And we should have a, we should shoot for preliminary reports by the second meeting in October, the twenty-fifth. Uh, and then, you know, see.
That's doable.
She being scheduled, like, that's, that's ambitious, which is fine. We can do.
Yeah, I, one of the reasons I raise it is because, of course, I'm not on any money committees. So I would, however, like to attend some of the meetings, and I would ask that the chairs kind of keep that in mind. Um, don't necessarily schedule around me, but I would like to attend as many as I can. I'm interested in the budget process, have some history doing so, so, thank you.
And, uh, a good suggestion, Mary, and I, and I, I agree with you, uh, and every board member should take a keen interest in the budgeting process. And, uh, and, and my, my admonition to all committee chairs this year is to scrutinize your budget requests very carefully. I'd like to see us hold, uh, the line wherever we can, look for reductions wherever we can. Uh, and the reason for that is that we have been fortunate to be able to provide the taxpayers with a fairly decent property tax reduction this year, and, and I'd like them to be able to consider that that reduction would continue and that we wouldn't be figuring that because there was reduction, we have the the wherewithal to to increase it by percentages that we really should. So I think we can get along. Uh, and it'll be a tough task this year, even tougher than in previous years because of the inflationary increase in just about everything that we're dealing with, so. It's a challenge, but I think it's one that if we work, if we work to it, we can we can hold the line in, in many cases. Okay. Any other committee meeting updates? There haven't been, uh. Let's go to old business. The permit tracking ordinance.
Um.
Where?
I have read this through, and frankly, I have some pretty substantial questions about it. Um, particularly. And so I don't know if you want to schedule a separate time to take it up, or you want to hear concerns now or how you want to deal with that.
Well, what?
Wait until Barbara's on, since.
Probably a good idea.
Her revisions.
Say what, Kurt?
We should probably wait until Barbara's on, since they're her revisions.
The revision the planning commission had was adding that supplemental questionnaire made that, that was intended there.
I didn't have a pay rate changed to, or not pay rate.
There was a suggestion from her.
The fine.
Uh, that was a, there was an, an option to go up to eight hundred dollars as the maximum per day. That was their only thing that they, they, that was, that was their discussion was that it could be, the fines could be increased eight hundred dollars a day.
She added, she added per day.
Right, it, it didn't, well, it didn't specify before.
Yeah, before, before it's violation, now it's day after violation.
Well, the, uh, yeah, so, yeah, each day so constitute, which, uh, is consistent with some other ordinances that we have. So it just, it just made the, it made each of them more in line with each other. But yes, that's, that's, that, 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 that was what they had talked about was, um, just bringing, making that consistency. Uh, and then, yeah, but other than that, if, if, when you have a draft copy, if nothing's highlighted, it wasn't changed.
Uh, I don't have that particular thing in front of me here, so.
I move with table until we have Barbara here to discuss her.
Motion to table, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Second that motion. Aye.
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 Table will require a second.
Oh, a second, wow.
I don't think.
We all hide it.
Yes. It's seconded in any case. I thirded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Any oppose?
Aye.
Uh, it's unanimous, and we will deal with that at a future date to be determined by the tabler. Okay, update project list. Any other old business to come before the board? Hearing none, we'll go to new business. Hearing none, we'll go to new business. Credit card policy is done. Social service policy, that's delayed. Board discussed delinquent tax collector transition and I would invite Jim Schultz to the table for this, this discussion. And good, good evening, Dave. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you for your patience, Jim. What I do, you're gonna have some. The we, the reason we have this on the agenda, uh, folks, is that the Jim Schultz had approached me, oh, I don't know, two, three weeks ago, uh indicating that he and his wife would like to do some traveling and actually uh, in, in a way retire, since he is retired, uh, and uh that he would be considering uh resigning his uh, delinquent tax collector position, so I will let him explain or tell us a, you know, give, give us any recommendations and tell us what you plan to do, Jim.
Okay, um, so, yeah, um. I have reached uh the age of sixty-five and I am gonna start collecting social security and the earnings from collecting the taxes uh will shadow that and I will actually lose social security benefits uh money uh by earning more than the allowed amount is one small part of it. The second is, most important one is that um have, haven't um traveled to um um, an elderly member of her family, um, and uh he, he passed uh, just before COVID started um at a hundred and three years old.
Wow.
Yep, and he was living on his own until then, um. And then um with COVID hitting, um, I ran again, um and it's worked out well in that um with the COVID, we weren't traveling. Obviously, um, now we'd like to get back into the traveling and the warrant season, when the warrant comes out, is one of the prime times that we want to travel. And I wind up putting in at least a couple of weeks of sixty, eighty hours uh, getting that set and then probably another month of, of full uh, forty hours a week, following up on all of it to get it done and then it tapers off to um, what's left of uh those folks who haven't been able to pay and, and, and tracking them. So, um, my original thought, my reporting year is from January one to December thirty-first. So, I, I was intending to hand in a resignation sometime before December thirty-first, with that being my final date, uh, turn in my report for the year. Um, I'd be glad to, um. You, you would wind up being, needing to appoint somebody until my term expires, which would be one year. And I would be glad to assist that person initially to, um be able to use the new system that, that the tax collector has been on since I've been here, which is in the NIMRIC system. And then, um make it a smooth transition, then therefore for the um treasurer and clerk, um that the person handing them reports in, in turning the money over to them and that would be doing it in the way that it's been done that um Carrie and I worked out, uh, did best suits how they do their job and how I do my job. Beyond that, um, I do. That would be how I feel about it, if, if it's needed, um, I don't mind staying on a little longer if there isn't anybody to appoint, but I don't want to be involved in the warrant coming up.
Which would come up?
It, um, af- right after the May payment of the taxes, so.
Oh, May, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That wouldn't be the case.
Yeah, and somebody would need to be on, you know, at least a month or so before that to learn how to use all the software and that, so. Um, beyond that, um, any questions, I guess, at this point?
When's your term up?
Uh, twenty, uh, the, uh, two thousand twenty-four.
March twenty-four.
Yep.
Now, you said you'd be willing to help somebody out, uh, that was appointed to fill in for your term, would you would you be equally willing to help somebody out if we hired somebody, if the townspeople so decided to?
To me, that's the same thing.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions from the board? Well, you know, we have a you know, we have a we have a decision in front of us to, as to how this transition will take place. And then we have, we had discussed uh whether we would choose to keep this as a uh, an elected position or or appoint someone, and obviously that takes a vote of the, that takes a vote of the voting public of the town, so that would have to come up on a, on a regular or a special election. We do have a regular election coming up in March. Do you, do you have any recommendations based on what you've done in the job? I mean, is it, uh?
So, um, just as a, as a history, as I see it, um Dick Lloyd was the, um uh, collector of delinquent taxes up until two thousand thirteen, when he, um he retired, um, at that point, he had a year left in his and I was, I accepted an appointment to do it for a year. Um, I found it very interesting, um, and what happened during that year is Dick had uh somebody write him a computer program, cause the collector of delinquent taxes as an elected official, um, is an independent office of the town and therefore um is responsible for deciding how how to collect the taxes and how to, how to record the information and all of that with certain requirements as to what is to be turned over to the treasurer and any reports that may be made to, say, the board, um. Beyond that, uh, those are in the statutes, um, the rest of it is open to how the that person who was elected does it. So, a considerable effort by myself, um, and, um Chris Howland in getting the tax collection, delinquent tax collection under the NIMRIC system, which is how the rest of the town is running. Um, has turned out fairly well, um. It eliminates, um, a lot of, um, duplication of some efforts, so to speak, and um, it brings all of the information into the same database that the rest of the town's information is in for the, the taxes themselves and for the listeners and all that, so it all, it all uh, marries into one system, um. If a new person elected to this position decides that they find something about using NIMRIC, um unreasonable, or they're just not willing to do that, they can go back to doing it any way they want. It would should lose the continuity of it being in NIMRIC, um. And the town, the select board, uh, would have, um, no recourse in that. Um, so keeping it as an elected position, um that continuity and a few other things are left up to the person who's elected to that position. It's worked well to now, um. Uh, myself and Chris Howland were technically competent to handle all of these things. Um, and, um with all of the collectors from Dick through myself, um, that I, that's all my history that I know. Um, there haven't been any major issues with townspeople being upset by the methods used or, or the communications with, uh, between the tax collector and the citizens, the taxpayers, um, correct me if I'm wrong on that, I don't believe, yeah. And so.
If there were, we would certainly hear about it.
Yes, that's, you know, um, so, um, looking at all of that personally, from um, my point of view of, of the, the abilities required and some of the abilities that you hope the person has, being able to communicate with people um, to be able to treat people respectfully and, and so on. Um, the way things have been changing with all of the technology electing somebody is basically leaving it up to, in reality, more of a pers- uh, of, of, um of a popularity contest versus focusing on somebody who can execute the position in today's times. Um, so I personally feel that it would be better if the town were to um, appoint, appoint or hire a, um, someone to do it. Um, I caution the board to read a whole lot about the, if, if that's a decision that is wanted to look carefully at all the different possible, um ways that you can create the, the tax collector's position. Um, and the, um, some of the ramifications uh, in, in a simple one, like I said, is the, uh, is an elected official, they, um they have wide open as an appointed position, depending on which form of it you choose there's more or less control by the board or um, town manager, if you have a town manager or whatever, uh, system of government you're running. Um, also, I personally think that the um, that the person appointed to this, um, should be within the town, their, their only their only job, so, um. As I said, the, um, there's a big crunch, May, June, uh, because of the warrant coming out. Um, you're chasing down, uh, up to a couple hundred people. Um, trying to get money back from them, you're also required to do some research to make sure that properties have, that have been sold, you don't send the bill for the delinquent taxes to the previous owner, because that information doesn't change until April of each year. So you have to look back at all the transfers that happened during the year to make sure that none of them involve your um your charges, um. The, trying to keep on a track here, um. The, the other thing I've found, uh, so, so my point there is that the number of hours required uh, varies wildly from one month to another. Um, there are weeks where I put in four or five hours or none, um, that they're not too frequent, but they're there. Um, and a general thing might be like ten hours and then, like I said, you're gonna have a, around the warrant, you're gonna be working um, some overtime from that point of view, um. If, I, I, I've heard some people speak of, well, it, it could be somebody um, if you want to hire somebody, it could be somebody that's hired to do work in more than one office in the town. I don't think that would work out well, um, because of the, the variance in how it goes. The other is, uh, there was some talk about how you would pay them. Um, the general way to get paid is there's a penalty of eight percent put on any taxes that are still due on the eleventh of May. That is the incentive I have to go get that money, collect it and bring it to the town. Um, it's a reasonable amount, um. I have, um, I don't feel that I've been working for nothing at any time. Um, if you put somebody on a salary, then the, with the variance in the hours and all of that kind of thing, um, I don't know if you're gonna find someone who's who's gonna be working on a salary that's, that's gonna be able to handle such a variable schedule, um. And, you know, there are years where, um the amount of money to be made is fairly high, cause of situations that, that say, a business or a person has where they uh, have an issue or just forget to pay their taxes, you can wind up with a fair amount in your pocket, but in general um, the, the amount of money ranges, has been ranging um, since I took it over anywhere from about twelve thousand to twenty, twenty-five thousand on average for the year. Um, so, um. It's also the hours, I post my hours as I'm available for contact during the week from uh, nine to nine and on the weekends, I'm available from uh, ten to six. So, you know, you, you really need to be able to, to, um handle seven days a week, cause a lot of these people are working hard and they don't have the ability to be contacted other than, say, evenings or weekends. So, a lot of that has to be thought about for, um, for choosing somebody and, and how you're going to compensate them if you're going to make it a appointed or hired position, from my point of view, that, after doing what I've done for the past six years.
Good.
So, from that, any questions?
Jim, you mentioned doing our research and looking for options. Did you find one place, for example, the League of Cities and Towns that had some? Okay, that's the league, right?
There it is.
That, that is, that really has been my only reference for all this, because the information is very good and if you have questions, especially since I'm a, an elected official, I can call them as part of the town and ask questions. Um, obviously, you folks have that ability, so uh, yeah, they, you know, if something in here seems a little awry, and so, yeah, I definitely use this, I'd be glad to sit in with the, the committee if they want to have a little jam session on, you know, what I've found in here in particular and that kind of thing.
Well, we'll certainly consider that, we'll leave it for another time, however.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, thanks for the, the heads up and sufficient time to work into it and your flexibility.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, and it's obviously something we gotta think about, yeah.
Yep.
Appreciate all the insight.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, you know, the world's changing as far as technology, people's capabilities and how people get along with people. So.
Well, for one thing, I'd like to thank you for the job that you've done and, uh, for your service to the town. Because it's, it's greatly appreciated and appreciate yours and the, uh you know, the numbers that are in the town report show that, because we have a very, very favorable delinquency rate.
Mm-hmm.
There are always people that have problems and, you know, they have There are always people that have problems and, you know, they have to be dealt with, but we're, uh. Uh, we're not a town that has a significant delinquency rate and that's because of good people like you, so.
And good taxpayers.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, uh, on part of that, I can say this, that. Um, in this position, you have to be able to, um. Or you should be able to. Handle the fact that some people are gonna be very upset and, and so on. Some people. They're very, very few and far between are actually kind of belligerent about this, um, and most of them. Um, uh, it's like, uh, my. Interpretation is, uh, better than half of them open up my letter in June and say, oh darn. I thought I forgot something, you know, uh, but then there's the group you were just talking about. Which, um, is, is a fairly large group in some senses, but it's usually not the most money. Um, who just have real problems. Life has dealt them some pretty hard times and they just need some help figuring out how to get through it. So you, you gotta have a thick skin at times and you have to, you know, be very compassionate of others.
Very good. Thanks for coming in, Jim.
You're welcome.
Thanks for. Educating us a little bit on this.
Yep.
We're, we're not tax collectors, so. I know what I don't know.
Hey, the Beatles even wrote a song about me.
Think we've hit every other thing on the, uh, new business agenda unless there's any other new business to come before the board. But he all set?
Move, we adjourn.
Jeez.
Most new adjourners seconded right there.
I'll, I'll second it, but jeez, we. This might be a record.
Why?
Quarter after eight.
Yeah, what, you want to go to ten?
No, it might be a record.
A whole mess more things we could take the birthday up with. That motion is undebatable and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are finished and thank you very much.
Good night, all.